Ready, Mary?
I'm ready.
Legal counsel? Legal counsel, you guys ready? Casey, you ready?
I'm ready, thank you.
Do you want somebody to?
I do.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the February 7th, 2019, meeting of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners. It is now 10:00 a.m. and I'll convene the meeting in the first thing, if I can get, why don't we get, Macaulay, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Macaulay. And Commissioner Starrett, I understand you have somebody to provide your invocation today?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce Pastor David Case. Pastor Case was born and raised in Newburgh and has been on staff and the pastor at Newburgh Christian Church since 1982. He's currently the Newburgh Dundee Police Chaplain, a board member of YCAP and PCC, the Chehalis Valley Chamber, on the Local Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Planning Committee, and is the Newburgh High School freshman baseball coach, and is just back from 12 days in Kenya doing some really difficult work there. And so, we're grateful for the work that Pastor David Case does in our community and grateful that he's willing to join us this morning. Pastor, come on up.
Thank you for the honor of being here, and would you bow to me and pray? Father, we want to pause and thank you for another beautiful day of life. God, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you, and I thank you for these commissioners who are public servants. We pray for your blessing upon them. We pray for wisdom and discernment as they hear people's issues and concerns today. And God, we're, again, want to just say thank you. Thank you for this county, thank you for this great state, thank you for this great country, thank you for the freedom that we have, and thank you, God, that we can seek you and seek your wisdom. Be with us today, it's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, and thanks for everything you do.
Okay, this is time, before we get started, I'd like to ask everybody for the courtesy of everybody in the audience, and for the commissioner, if you do have your cellphone, could you please silence your cellphone and refrain from either texting or taking or receiving any calls or making any calls in the commission chamber? So, thank you. This is a time we normally reserve for public comment. Normally, we reserve about 30 minutes, and we have, it looks like 15 or 16 people who want to testify today, so what we will ask is that you keep your comments as brief as possible, and if somebody else has already repeated your comments, you can just put your name on the record and say that I agree with their comments, so we can move through this. It's not my intent to limit the comments to three minutes per person, but it is my intent if I see somebody kind of rambling on that I might ask them to wrap up their public testimony. And as I know, there's a lot of people looking at these who would like to provide comment on the trail. The only stipulation is, is as many of you are aware, we do have a remand from Lubbock as a land use issue, so we ask you, if you're going to make comments on the trail, that you do not make any comments regarding the remand or the land use issue that will be coming back in front of the county, and if you do, I will leave it up to our legal counsel, leaving it to Mr. Todd Saddle to kind of bring us back online if he thinks anything is being said that could have to do with the remand of the land use issue. Does it sound good to you, Todd?
That sounds good, and I would just note that we are planning to have that hearing on March 7th, and so you will have an opportunity on March 7th to make comments regarding the land use application.
So, basically, anything regarding the master plan, anything regarding the grant, you can make comments on those, because it's not a land use issue, it's not currently on our schedule for today, and it is not currently a public hearing, but anything that has to do with the remand, we can't allow any public comment on the remand, so. Okay, so that being said, and I'm just going to start going through these, and we ask when you come forward to pull the microphone a little bit close to you and make sure that you state your name and your address for the record, so we can get it recorded. So, the first one I have on the list is Tom Hammer. So, Tom, why don't you come on up, please?
Tom Hammer, 23701 Wallace Road, Wheatland, Oregon. Commenting on the Connect Oregon Grant, I understand the remand, this is no more an ex parte comment or contact than was, took place between staff and council at the Monday meeting on the very same issue. I'm not asking for special permission, I'm just wanting to add to what has already been established at Monday.
You mean on our Tuesday, our Tuesday meeting?
I'm sorry?
Our Tuesday meeting, Tom? Our Tuesday meeting?
Your current Monday meeting, correct. What I have here is a letter from Wendy Callington. It's hand-delivered right now. It's to each of the commissioners. I'll summarize, because I understand you've got a pretty good backlog of people that want to do this, if I may continue. Wendy, in summarizing, the grant was scheduled to be talked about today, but it was pulled. But it's evident, because of the meetings that took place, that some are under the assumption that this trail is inevitable, and that is just not so. It still stands a chance of being denied, a 50-50 chance. To continue with the assumption that it will happen is to prejudice yourselves, and in a upcoming legal, quasi-legal farm review, if you're pre-prejudiced, you can't really make a valid and legal, an impartial decision. So, the grant money and the trail are inexorably linked. To proceed on one is to assume the trail. To assume the trail is to prejudice yourself against fair judgments before you. So, this adds some legal opinions and knowledge to what you've already gotten internally. The tape, the audio from Monday's meeting showed that there were several legal items lacking in what had been presented to you. This simply augments it. I understand you're under time constraints this morning. I'll leave the summary at that, and ask permission then to hand-carry these to each of the commissioners.
Mr. Hammer, those letters, I believe it states in that letter that it's to be added to the record in the proceedings on the land use remand, and I believe that that's the appropriate way to handle that material. So, that's the way I would like for that to be handled. That has already been delivered, it will be provided to the commissioners in a packet of material, of all the material that we received pre-hearing for the remand hearing to be held on March 7th. So, that's the way we would like to.
What I'll ask you to do, Tom, if that's the case by legal counsel, instead of giving to each individual commissioner, why don't you give them to legal counsel, and he can ensure that they, it's something that we have already received, and we'll be part of that, part of that pack, and if not, he will review it and make sure that we get it when appropriate.
And we will get it, Tom.
So, I'll just have to give.
Thank you for consideration.
You got it.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, the next one on our list, it looks like is Brian Cook. So, Brian, come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Brian Cook, 11543 Southwest Spring Hill Road, Gaston, Oregon. So, I'm here to talk a little bit about gates that are currently on, I believe, public lands or block off access from public lands. I appreciate the time, Chair Richard, and members of the commission. To summarize, I'd like to see, if possible, the gates open up and allow public access, allow public recreation, whether with the pending snowstorms, families go up, and we don't get the snow here, but they can go play with their kids up there, harvest mushrooms, harvest any of nature's bounties up there. And I believe it's a privilege and a right, kind of mixed in, to enjoy our time on public lands and have access to public lands. Currently, I know there's been an issue on the High Heaven Gate that you've already addressed, but I'd like to see it go beyond that point. Very active in the outdoors, I don't even know how many thousands of hours a year I donate, and, you know, with nonprofits and stuff, working for continuation of outdoor activities, so. That's all I have, I'll keep it short and sweet. I know there's better people coming up behind me.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Let's move on, then, to Lonnie Seizer. Lonnie?
My name's Lonnie Seizer, 21020 Baker Creek Road. I am in agreeance with Brian, I just want to add a couple more things with the access. Same thing, you have revenue that we're kind of missing here also. We have generations of hunters, as I'm an instructor also, that they need to have an opportunity to not have to leave Yamhill County to go hunting or to learn about hunting processes. Same thing, if we're worried about cleanup and things like that, we have local scout troops and things that they are required to do service hours in order to make their eagle. These are the type of things they enjoy doing, I've been with the scouts for years. Same thing, driving, how many of us learned how to drive up in the woods? Okay, that was a safer environment to teach kids to drive than in town. That was one place that I learned. So, that's been taken away on some roads, not all. And then, the last quick comment is, I don't personally have an issue with the gates being on the road. I have an issue with the gates being locked, okay? If a gate's on a road, and we have people that are going up there dumping, doing bad things, and you force them to get out of their car and go open the gate and/or close it behind them if they do that, that's one more little thing deterrent that might keep people out from doing those type of things. So, I just, for me personally, I don't have a problem with the gate, I have a problem with it being locked and not allowing access for me. That's all I got, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lonnie.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one on the list, actually, it's the second one, I'm sorry, I have these two out of order, so, Joe Goll. So, Joe, why don't you come on forward, and again, state your name and your address for the record, please?
I am Joseph Goll, 1156 Southwest Westvale Street, McMinnville, and that home is located in Immobile Home Park, that I have to pay space rent for, but I really wanted to say that I am in support of my president, President Donald Trump, and I adamantly approve of everything he has done so far in his presidency. And I also want to bring to your attention an ongoing situation that has been frustrating me for the last, well, since 2002, and that is the illegal taxation of my mobile home is classified in the law as personal property, personal property. And I have my current payment due, prepared, ready to submit to the assessor, but the assessor has chosen to remove my name from the assessment page, and he thought I died. I guess he wished I would, so I would quit coming with my petitions. And I have a brief, a brief package here that I will submit to the chairman for everybody to read, to that supports my position that my property is illegally assessed. The law, ORS 308.875, classifies my mobile home as personal property, but he continues to assess it as real property, and has the audacity to even, on one of these official pages here, he says it's real property. Well, it isn't. He can't reclassify my home from personal to real. It just isn't allowed in the constitutional republic that my President Donald Trump supports. And so, I would like to submit this to the chairman there.
Joe, you can submit it actually to Carolina. When you leave, you can submit it to Carolina over, and she'll make sure everybody gets copies of it to read.
Okay, thank you, yes. It's been very frustrating, and I have, I know Commissioner Starrett is familiar with my issues, but Commissioner Olson, I think, has, but I don't think that Commissioner...
And I'm aware of the bigger issue, but not yours specifically, so thank you.
You're aware of the bigger issue, and, well, I do believe that the commissioners, the commissioners have the authority to direct legal counsel to prosecute any violations of law, and what the assessor has been doing for the last 17 years, and this, not only this assessor, but the assessors of the past, they have violated their law, the laws concerning this issue, and nobody has taken steps to prosecute the assessor or even, well, I don't want, I don't want anybody to get into trouble, but I want, I want everybody to obey the law as written, and the attorneys over here have not done their duties in accordance with the law and their oath of office.
Okay, Joe, I think you're running a little bit late, and so, if I can get you to wrap up your comments and give that to Carolina.
I covered the issue, and I appreciate the time that you have given me, and I wish you all well, and for benefit of Commissioner Starrett, she's been with me on this issue for a while, but hasn't been able to do anything about it any more than I have, but she knows that I've been absent for maybe two or three, and that absent, Commissioner, was because I have suffered through three surgeries and survived, survived long enough to correct the assessor's statements, and I'm still a part-owner of this property, and I'm still alive.
And we're still glad, and we're glad you're still with us, Joe.
Good to see you. Thank you, Mr. Goll.
Okay, let's move forward to Ron Welborn. Ron?
Morning, my name's Ron Welborn. Live at 6815, we own property, 6815 Northwest High Heaven Road. My wife and I have owned property up there for over 25 years. I worked with the county sheriff's office for 29 years, and see the problems of having a gate and not having a gate up there. Back when there wasn't a gate up there, people from all over would come up and go, driving in the playground is what they would call it, doing damage to both the culverts, the roadways, newly planted trees, and so forth. Had a lot of criminal activity up in that area before the gates were put. When it snows, I know people like to come up and drive in the snow, I like to drive in the snow, but they get stuck, they would come down to our house at all hours of the day and night, 3:00 in the morning, we've had a lot of criminal activity up there, some that I can't speak about. The other is garbage dumping, we've had garbage dumped in the woods. Anytime that people bring their garbage, they either dump it right there at the gate or before that there were gates, they would take it up and just dump it along. And I know that the sheriff's office, excuse me, is doing a cleanup yearly now with BLM, sheriff's office, and some of the other county parking wreck, public works, and they're pulling dumpsters full of garbage out of areas that don't have gates. So, in a way, I'm supportive of having the gates there, but I also understand that not having the gates, public access. High Heaven, behind those gates is Hancock property, warehouse or property, and I believe there's a small chunk of BLM land, which is only a few acres, I believe it's 10 or 20 acres up there. There's no other public lands up there. The other public land is accessed through Vaughn Road, Peavine Road, and Baker Creek Road. So, I guess I'm in support of keeping the gates there. I agree with the resolution that came before you on Tuesday of having the gates there, providing keys to the public safety responders and also the residents in the area. I don't necessarily agree with giving keys to the public access. If there was an emergency, those residents would be in contact with either the sheriff's office or the fire department to open the gates up and evacuate them, so I don't agree with that number four on it. So, I'd just like to take this time to thank you, and take it into consideration of both the pros and the cons of having public access and not having access. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, John Van Dyke. John, sitting back, way back in the back, come on forward.
John Van Dyke, 1255 East Main Street in Yamhill. Good morning. On Yamhill County's website, the Connect Oregon Grant Application Packet, on pages 35, 36, and 37, designed by OPEC and Oregon Department of Transportation, are three two-scale pedestrian bridges. During the previous meetings, it was expressed that by Yamhill County, these bridges would provide better access for emergency services, police, and fire. These pedestrian bridges cannot support that equipment at their PS, 90 PSI, designed ratings. At this point, the county does not know what type of bridge to design and construct, and it will not know until such time that a master plan is complete. To proceed with this grant would be a waste of taxpayer money, and grants are taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Dyke.
It looks like Tom Kenner. I hope I have that right, Tom.
It's Cannon.
Okay, Cannon. Okay.
Yes, my name is Tom Cannon, and I live at 17901 Southwest Highway 18 out of McMinnville, Oregon. I've either worked in the woods and recreated in the woods my entire life. I understand, I understand a lot of reasoning behind gates, private timber companies hold, but I think that, I think the issue at hand is keeping people, not giving people the access needed to recreate on public lands. I understand, I understand that the gates are needed in the event of, you know, fire season, or to protect their land holdings, timber, and whatever, but I do believe that if there is a gate on a land, on a road that gives people access to recreate on public lands, it shouldn't ever be locked, other than for fire danger. And I'll keep this short and sweet, but I wish, I wish you people would at least look at the issue at hand, and there's a lot of people out there that do recreate, they don't hunt, they don't fish, but a lot of them go up and go hiking, a lot of them, you know, just go up for a Sunday drive, just to get away from town, and I don't think that the gates should be locked, but that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Margella, Marley, Marlega, I'm sorry if I butchered that, Scott, but...
He can tell us.
Scott Marlega, Land Use Manager for Warehouse Company. Address is 34904 Brewster Road, Lebanon, Oregon. Thank you for allowing me to make a few comments on the High Heaven Gate access up there. We appreciate the cooperation. Since 2001, Yamhill County provided us the gate permit. I was, I've been in this area for 30 years, went to Washington for a little bit, came back, but I was here before the gate. I experienced it, and I think a lot of people in this room experienced the road condition up there, the dumping, the garbage. You can actually go up there today and kind of dig around, you can kind of see some of the piles still, so it was a heavily used area. Warehouse owned the front end of it, at the time, Lamont Industries did, but the back end was Boise Cascade, which is now Hancock, and then BLM was behind them, but the road crosses two and a half miles of private property, then it gets on the BLM property. The BLM property is accessible from Vaughn Road, the Meadow Lake Road area, so it's not, the BLM property is not landlocked, if, with the gates in place, people could still access the BLM property. I took a look at the 2001, the board order, and it states, "The two gates were put in to address ongoing problems with trash dumping, vehicle abandonment, vandalism, fire danger, and other problems. These claims were well-founded, confirmed by the county surveyor. Public hearing was held on August 9th, 2001, and applicants and several citizens spoke in favor of the gates, and no one at that time wrote or spoke in opposition." Now, 18 years later, I guess, back up, 18, for 18 years, the area's been in pretty good shape, the gates have been in place, we haven't had any issues, and now we're being asked to kind of open the gates again, and based on what we've seen on Baker Creek, Peavine, Gopher Valley, a little bit on Baker Creek, we expect the same things is going to occur that happened pre-gate days. We think there's going to be more dumping, fires, all that stuff, so we're very concerned about who's going to be addressing cleaning up the items, abandoned vehicles, illegal dumping, and just the close proximity to the urban populations of McMinnville, Hillsborough, Forest Grove, where it gets out, the roads open, so, yeah, we anticipate, it's a heavily used area. And I did want to correct, I've heard a few times, the warehouse does have a recreation lease program in this area. About 90% of our property is not underneath that program, not underneath the permit program, but about 10% is, and in this area, there's two leases up on High Heaven Road. There's one north of High Heaven, and there's one to south of High Heaven. Both of those access points are off Baker Creek, and the other one is off High Heaven, but not through the High Heaven public road gate. If you go up there, there's a gate to the right of that, so we did research before we leased these areas, make sure they were not included in the lease. to make sure they were not included in the lease agreements with the, with our lessee. And I met with both of them years ago when they leased it, and explained to them, the High Heaven public access road is not part of their lease. They do not access through that road. And Warehouse has never charged public, any money to go through that gate. I did, I did bring three maps of our lease areas. If you guys are interested in looking at those.
Yeah, give them, give them to Caroline, and she'll make sure we get them.
How many access points more to the big black dot? Those are the same maps that the lessee leases.
Thank you.
So, Warehouse's number one concern is, if the gate is open, it comes out, who's going to maintain the road? We spent the last 18 years repairing the road. We got it back up to forced practices standards for logging, for hauling. The road's in very good shape right now. They Hancock, not speaking for them, they did the same on their road, but we put a lot of dollars into that road over the last 18 years. Gates are going to be open. Public's going to come back in there. Who's going to, who's going to maintain those roads for the public access? That's our number one concern.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Hope you have a safe drive back.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, the next one I have is Jay Disbro. So, Jay, come on forward, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jay Disbro, 5015 East Main Street in the city of Yam Hill. I'm also a counselor for the city of Yam Hill, and authorized to speak officially for the city on the issue of the trail. The city fully supports the trail, and having it completed expeditiously, in anticipation of the economic and recreational benefits it would bring. I have two examples personally on economic benefits for trails. One is that we lived on the western slope of Blue Ridge Mountains in West Virginia, within a mile of the Appalachian Trail, and also within three miles of the CNO Canal, which ran from Washington, DC up into Maryland. Significant impact of all the people that came into that area to recreate. The second is my roots are from northern Idaho, where there are many, many trails. There are trails that go from Montana through Idaho into Washington, and that has brought a significant amount of people. I have a, got a Christmas card from a friend whose grandchildren run bus service up there. In the wintertime, they run bus service for the skiers. In the summertime, they run bus service for hikers and bikers. And they, she says that they had 50,000 trips on those trails up there. If she is only 50% correct, 25,000 is still a significant amount. So, the city supports the trail in hopes of better recreation and economic development. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, Veronica Hinks. Veronica, you want to come forward, please?
Again, I'm hoping that we will just be talking about this grant and saving the overall comments about the trail for the 7th, if that's at all possible.
If they're legal tight. Just go ahead, Veronica.
Good morning, Chair Elson and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity this morning. I just wanted to give a quick thank you to the Commission and the staff for thinking creatively, and hopefully finding a way to save the Connect Oregon 6 grant. I attend statewide bicycle tourism and trail conferences, and there is a huge amount of excitement out there about this trail project, including among potential future funding sources like ODOT, Travel Oregon, and Cycle Oregon. And it would be a real shame to, and a setback for the trail to lose that momentum. So, again, just thank you for your work on this.
Okay, thank you, Veronica. Amy Brewer?
Hi, I'm Amy Brewer, and I live 310 North Olive Street in Yam Hill. And I guess I am, well, I'm a dreamer, and a writer, and a teacher. And so, I inspire children, and as I hope all of you do that with your choices and what you make. I'm also a mom of three boys. We moved to Yam Hill nine years ago. I believe this concern was at, at that time still going. And my kids ask every year, "Will, will the trail be open, Mom?" And so I guess I'm just here to do a little bit more of the push of cheerleading, and drawing, and, and hope that it doesn't have any more setbacks. Because I keep seeing on European Twitters and other communities on how they are doing forward movement of helping communities be vital with exercise, which I think is so important, and that would, that would really access our kids from Yam Hill to Carlton to use the pool. And currently, my son is a runner. He would like to run to Carlton, but the edge of the, the road is one-half inch on the other side of the white line in Quadish, so he can't run there. But the trail access would allow that, and, and just continue to, you know, showcase Oregon as an, as an opportune place to, to raise children, and to come and, you know, bring all that tourism that would be so vital to our community and jobs. And I, I just love it. And, and I want to see our Twitter feed showcasing our community on how we are making better children who totally need, as a public educator, all over, all of our kids need more exercise, and they need to see that opportunity in our communities, and just to see that change actually happen for them. So, I, I'm just here to say, keep going, and please continue making progress, and no making setbacks, because it's a, it's a great thing for all communities. And, sorry, I'm, I'm a dreamer, writer. I want it all. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. James Hurdy? James, come on, come on forward, please.
My name's James Hurdy, 910 Southwest Fewmont in Dundee, Oregon, here to express my interest in the, in the gate closures and stuff. It's, public access is very important. I, I have two sons and five grandkids, and all of them hunt, and all of them like to take a ride to look for animals. And anytime you, you block off access, you block off opportunity for kids to be outdoors and to enjoy the outdoors. So, I would, and it's needs of access as well. And so, I would encourage you to, to consider keeping the gates open, so that we can all enjoy the public property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. John DeMaye? So, John, come on forward, please.
Morning. John DeMaye, 21,000 Northwest Baker Creek, McMinville. Last night, I watched the video of the work session on Tuesday, and I just kind of have a process observation. I don't know anything about your legal processes, but where, we sort of, in a way, had a, have a bipolar discussion about the Warehouse or gate on High Heaven. And until today, when Scott came, I'm not aware that we've had any Warehouse or people actually here to talk about it. What we did, however, is we delegated our staff to go talk to Warehouse. So, my impression of the work session, which is where three Commissioners come together to, you know, sort the truth, and compare opinions, and, and have maybe contentious discussions, not necessarily relevant to Tuesday, but in that case, it's just my impression that when you have county staff, who are really the sole representatives of one pole of the discussion, it's not a really a good thing, you know, because they wind up kind of, in this case, representing Warehouse in that discussion. And they're also, you know, your confidants and, and staff people with which you have relationships, and there's all these relationship things going pre-established here, back and forth between you. And yet, the, you know, we've designated them the job of going and talking to Warehouse. And those are two hats that don't, for me, really fit real well. So, I don't know, I can't tell you how it could have been done otherwise, but I just wanted to give you the, the quick observation that I thought in terms of the group dynamics of that particular work session, that our staff winded up, wound up being, you know, in a way, subtle advocates for the Warehouse position, which didn't seem to me to be the best of all possible worlds.
Okay, thanks, John. Your comments are well taken.
This guy likes process, so.
Jerry Bates? Is it Jerry or Terry?
Jerry.
Jerry, come on forward, Jerry.
Hi, I'm Jerry Bates. I'm at 6800 Northwest High Heaven. So, I'm a resident at the gates. I'm in favor of them to stay closed. Mainly is, the road's three miles. A mile and a half of that is, no one can walk on it, hunt, hunt on it, trespass on it, due to the Warehouse leases. It is off limits. After that is Hancock property, which allows you to walk, bicycle, non-motorized vehicles only. Okay, I'm a hunter. I'm a horseback rider. I go up in that area. I ride that road. I walk that road with my dogs, with my kids. Grew up in this area for the last 19 years. I see a lot of people going up there on their bicycles. I see a lot of people going up there to run. People are still using that for recreational purposes. To use it as an access road to get to the other side. I went hunting on the other side, did not go to that road. I drove all the way around. I didn't have a problem with it. I don't understand, everybody's saying, "Hunting, hunting, hunting." I don't think that's the only use for a lot of our community once they find out the gates are open. I see a lot of kids coming up. I see a lot of people just going up and four-wheeling, going on property that they're not supposed to be. I see a lot of budgetary issues to the trash pickup, to the sheriffs being called up there, to people getting accidents. I think if you look at what happened before the gates were closed, and what the gates happened after the gates were closed, I think it's a clear message to say that keeping the gates closed is actually a big advantage to cost savings and for people's safety. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Well, Milton, it looks like it's your turn now.
Good morning. My name's Milton Bates. I live at 6800 Northwest High Heaven. I wasn't aware that my wife was actually going to speak, so I'm actually quite impressed. That was fantastic. I moved here in 1995. I, just to kind of give you a history, I loved taking my four-wheel drive pickup, my Toyota, driving up Baker Creek, ripping up to the top, taking a left going down Peavine, taking a right going down High Heaven. I lived for being up in those woods. I'm an advocate for that, but what I did notice, and I've noticed the change over these last 20-plus years, we would go up there, and I'd pull into an offshoot road. I would find couches. I'd find refrigerators. All this stuff dumped. Over the last, since 2001, that stuff's no longer there. Just like my wife, Jerry, said, we ride our horses up there. We hike up there. We take the dogs for walks. I see people riding their bikes through there. And we love the idea that there's no garbage. I love the idea that if I'm walking on that road, I don't really have any way to get off the road. I went up yesterday just to double look at it. If someone drives through counting speed at 35 miles an hour, I'm going to be in some serious peril trying to get off the road and out of the way of that 20-year-old who's just going up to motor through and do some four-wheeling. That space between the two gates really is only Hancock and Warehouse or land. Now, I'm going to tell you, in my honest opinion, what's going to happen, you open the gate, that's fine. Most people are saying, "I'm going to drive through, and I'm going to go to the other side. I'm going to BLM." What's truly going to happen, the hunters that are up here, it's opportunistic, they're going to drive onto Warehouse or land. They're going to go right past those no trespassing signs, and then when you confront them, they're going to look at you and say, "Oh, I didn't see the sign. I wasn't aware." That's going to happen consistently and very normal all throughout hunting season. We see it already up there at our house. Now, I will tell you the positives. You open the gate, at least we won't have people doing drugs right at the gate in front of our house anymore. They can drive farther up the road. And we have other things that happen up there too, where we usually try to encourage them to head back down the hill. But you open that gate, hey, fine, at least we can get that out, away from our house. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Milton.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like the last one I have in front of me right now is Ben Van Dyke. So, Ben, come on, come on forward.
Thank you. Ben Van Dyke, 15221 Northwest Westside Road in Yam Hill. And I just want to talk about the ODOT grant quick. You'll find I have another in there about an agenda item. I thought this was on the agenda, so you can disregard my other comment sheet. But I just want to talk about how I believe this is not a good use of taxpayer money for us to be moving forward with a grant on a trail that might or might not happen, and a master plan that's not even done. And whether we have to repay that money back or not, I still don't think as a taxpayer, it's still taxpayer money, that is going to be misappropriated if we do that. So, I just want to make that point, that I think we need to not be buying a cart, or two carts, or three carts before we get the horse here. We don't even know what size cart we need yet. So, let's put some brakes on some things, and, you know, not use public money in a way that we shouldn't be doing it. Secondly, I just want to bring up the fact that that letter, and I have a copy of it also, and I'd like to hand it in, because I think your counsel's giving you bad advice on what this was in that letter. And so, I do believe that it does talk about this grant, and that Tom Hammer talked about. So, I'm going to turn it in also.
Okay.
And I hope that it comes to you, because I think counsel is wrong in what that letter states. And, and thirdly, before I go, I didn't come talking about a trail today. I came talking about a grant. But counsel allowed two people to talk about a trail. I would love to talk about it, but I don't think that's right. It's not the right time. But I think counsel needs to be steadfast in what they allow to be brought before the committee, and what they don't at the right time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. You can just hand that
Thank you, Ben.
over here.
And I think that was the last one. I think there's some other folks that
Well, I was going to hand, but I don't have any more cards.
This is a different, this is a good Mr. Chair, this is a different letter, so I would give it to you now.
Oh, okay.
It's not about the
Thank you, Mr. Legal Counsel. So, it's not about the remand or anything like that?
If he was still here, he'd be so happy. Somebody tell Tom.
It kind of is, but it's mostly not, so. Because, was there anyone else that submitted comment cards?
I didn't see many of them.
Well, why don't we go ahead, and while I'm looking for those, who, who are the two that submitted comment cards? Okay, why don't you two come, come on forward and state your name and address for the record, and...
Taylor Jerome, address 53017.
Sorry, it was upside down, stuck to another one, so I got yours.
It's Southwest Patton Valley Road in Gaston, Oregon.
Chris Green, 19910 Southwest Breedville Road, McMinville.
And we're both here to speak about the gates. I think on behalf of a lot of the sportsmen's in the room, the context regarding High Heaven's been a little bit lost. Our main discussion is about larger mainline roads that access public property. I completely agree with Ron, who I know personally and professionally. I work in local rural law enforcement like he did as well. I also work directly with Scott Marlega from Warehouse. I've probably prosecuted more cases on behalf of Warehouse than anybody else in the county for the past several years. So, I actually completely agree with everyone's statement so far that High Heaven should remain locked. That has very little benefit to the average sportsman. However, the roads that we're considering are more like Turner Creek Road, Toll Road, those kinds of things, which if you're not very familiar with, I would like to present the the Commissioners a map real quick that gives you a visual. Would it be okay if I brought any of these up?
I was going to bring mine in, but I was like, "Ah, it's too big."
Yeah, I have one for the three Commissioners. I could stand in front and explain it, but it gives you a visual of what we're trying to convey here. Is it okay if I bring them to you visually?
Yeah, if it doesn't take too long, sure.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Coolen, here's one for you.
Thank you so much.
And there's also another picture in there for you. Maybe I have your name on this one.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you.
So if you open those up, I've Sharpied a few points on one side for you. Just let me know when you're on the Sharpied side. Won't take too long.
I'm on the Sharpied side.
I'm on the Sharpied side.
So in general, if you look at this very big picture, you see the valley where you got Highway 47, and then you see the public access. Large blue is the state forest, the large green to the south is national forest, and the kind of orange blob in Yam Hill County there is BLM. So if you look at, you got all the white is private lands, and then all our public land is further up in the coast range. So what has happened is between regular person-owned and private property and then private timber company property, there's a de facto firewall of access to public lands. So I completely understand why these gates are in place. I'm the one that enforces those issues with trash dumps and vandalism and with that and that kind of stuff. However, there are certain ones, like if you look up at number one, that's Turner Creek Road, and Warehouse runs about seven miles of that road, and a third of that road goes to BLM publicly-owned land to begin with. It's one of the major thoroughfares that reaches state forest land. In order to get to that land, you have to go about an hour and a half additional around to the south or to the north, and you really have to know what you're going. Next one, number two, to the south is Toll Road, kind of the same issue. It gets up into large blocks of publicly-owned land. It also weaves through BLM land, and it's all essentially inaccessible because it's ten-mile walk-in from the nearest gate. To the south, there's examples, if you see the two green highlighted areas, number five and six, those are Warehouse or leases that I'm very familiar with. I've prosecuted people for trespassing on them. But they're an example of where public roads go through the private property. Those roads are not gated, and they have posted signs on both sides. But it allows the public to go from McMinnville Highway 18 up into the BLM area. It gives them access to the public land. So as sportsman or seeking, it's not access to Warehouse or property, period. We're not asking to change their policies, but just access to the public land and beyond it, because we've kind of reached a peak within the greater sportsman world of frustration where people are giving up on hunting, they're giving up on trying to get up there, whether it's dirt hikers, mushroom pickers, shed hunters, folks going for the Sunday drive, or hikers. And a lot of people are giving up because we have this seemingly insurmountable firewall of different gates. And if you look at the county, Yam Hill County, I've worked six different counties in law enforcement, and our county is very, very, very difficult to understand. So it's hard for the professionals in that field to understand it's insurmountable for the public. So all we're asking for is those main thoroughfares that were at one point public roads to be perhaps open so that the public can get to public land. We're not asking for these smaller roads like High Heaven that would bring a lot of crime, I 100% agree with you, that would create unlawful activity with no real tangible benefit. I think I've made my point there. I'll continue to emulate if I can.
I'm just a private citizen, and I've lived here since 1984. I've hunted for years and years and years. I'm an off-road OHB person. I've worked in and around Warehouse or's property since they've owned it. I unplug their colors. If I see something wrong, I go to law enforcement. If I see somebody littering, I tell them to pick it up and take it home. But like Taylor said, if you want to access the trash, if you're towing a trailer, you've got to go all the way down into the east fork and back up Steampot Ridge and everything else, and that's an 11% grade. And I miss the times of going through Toll Road and the access, and the access that is blocked by Warehouse or to access the fishing, just to access their land at all. It's just, it's really hard for people to get up there, because nobody wants to drive to Tillamook and come around. No matter how you get there, you can't get there. Anyways, those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think what we would like to see is maybe just scheduled future meetings to discuss, maybe one road at a time, maybe one mainline at a time, where we can take a little bit closer look at the issue. I know all the sportsmen here today were just trying to convey a broad idea of gates that are preventing the majority of the users to get into the majority of the land, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I've received everybody's now, so one last chance. Does anybody, did anybody turn a card that wanted to testify? I went through all these, and I did find these two gentlemen. If not, then we'll move from our public comment, period, into our consent agenda, Commissioners. We have several items on our consent agenda. We have five session meetings, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven grants, or six grants or contracts, to approve a approval of following changes, some additions of Parkway Committee, and approval to appoint a new representative from McMinnville Fire to the ambulance service area, and then approval of delegating authority to County Council to take necessary steps to terminate the litigation in Clackamas County on the MERS issue. So I'll entertain, we need to have anything pulled off the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have Commissioner Starrett moved approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the consent agenda was approved unanimously by Commissioner Starrett, Commissioner Coolen, Commissioner Olson. That takes us down to our old business, and this is consideration of the adoption of written findings and conditions in upholding the Planning Commission approval and denying the appeal of SDR 2818 for winery and tasting room with existing structure, Horse Barn Arena on a parcel with at least fifteen acres of vineyard planted on site. The applicant is Sandan LLC DBA Abbey Road Farms. So I'll turn that over to Todd. Todd?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, these are the findings and conditions that were delivered yesterday to you, and you already approved this by voice vote two weeks ago, and so this is the written decision for your approval.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of Item C, the adoption of the written findings.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion, Casey? No discussion? Okay, so we have a motion that we approve, Item C. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Let it show that the Commission unanimously approved the written findings and conditions in upholding the Planning Commission's approval and denying the appeal of Doc at SDR 28-18. Thank you, Commissioners. We have any non-consent agendas I don't believe on our agenda. We don't have an executive session for today, Legal Counsel. We don't have any executive session. No executive discussion. Any Commissioner updates or announcements, Mary? Nope. Casey?
Not today.
Not today. I don't have any today either. So hearing, no Commissioner updates and announcement, immediate adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.